For the folks watching online, we will be active here in four minutes, so just be patient. Alright, I want to call to order this special meeting of the Scotland County Board of Commissioners, October twenty first, twenty twenty five. And I think Ms. Tyson has already reminded everybody to speak into the mic, not so much for the room, but for the folks listening online and watching online, because that's how the sound goes through. First order of business is an approval of the agenda, which you all should have.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next we're going to go into our, call it an annual discussion with the sheriff about budget. And we'll move into, let Ms. Sneed here make a presentation beforehand, but before we start that, I just wanted to make a brief comment about it. You know, since the sheriff has been sheriff, two thousand fourteen, is that right? You know, the budget for the sheriffs and the jail, and we'll talk as a joint operation, but it's two separate budgets. But it's been, was, when he took office, it was four point six million dollars. This year, our budget calls for eight point two million dollars for the joint operation. So I know that's eleven years, but that's, cost of things go up over the years, so we know that. We are gonna, and we may get into that discussion today, we are grossly overcrowded. How many do we have today, BJ, do you know? So the state has already told us that we're going to have to move inmates to somewhere else, wherever that may be, I don't know if you've found the location or not, but that's going to be an additional fifty dollars a person per day. I don't, what do we pay now? What is our cost per day average? No, I'm talking about that we encounter. So it'll be an increase per inmate that we're going to have to move because of the crowding at the jail. So that's something we're going to have to, at one point, take up, because I don't know if we've moved anybody yet or not, so. But it's coming. The only other thing that I would say that we're gonna, and maybe this is for, this is really for another time, but I'll plant that seed in your head. No matter what we do, or where we do, a courthouse, jail, law enforcement center, it's got to be paid for. House Bill two fifty seven, and the house right now is asking for eighty million dollars for us to do that. We all know the budget is sitting on pause up there, so we don't know if or when that'll ever happen. And if it does, will it be that amount of money? It's going to roughly cost that amount of money. But I think in this year's budget planning, and this is not a sheriff budget or anybody else, maybe it's a special fund, that we're going to have to start scheduling a payment, if you will, for this, to be able to fund it. When it comes time to do whatever, whichever way we do it, we're going to have to get the money to do it, be it from the state, borrow it, whatever, bond issue, whatever we do. But I think now's the time to start planning for that, because it's coming. We all know it's coming. And so if we should get ahead of that, you know, if we approved it today, we're two years away from laying a block. I mean, that's just the way it is, and then another year from that, building it. So we're two or three years out from approving it to finishing it, and we're not even close to an approval, so you know, we got a long way to go, but I think we need to start planning that on a yearly basis and have some money set aside to do that when the time comes and we're not forced to make some changes on the tax rate that we want to do, so. But it is coming, and the numbers we get is going to be roughly around eighty million dollars-ish to do that. So with that, I'll turn it over to County Manager April and go through what presentation you have so far, and then we'll let the sheriff.
So I was asked to pull together some information, and my presentation is pretty short. Honestly, it's just information pulled on how we got here and what the numbers currently are. And so I will not read this out to everybody in the room, because we all can read, but I'll hit the highlights, and then I don't know if Mr. Ivy, if you want questions during the middle of slides, or if you want to wait to the end, so I'll let you decide how that's going to go. But so part of being fiscally responsible, of course, is monitoring the budgets for the county, and for that's every department in the county. And so public safety is our only departments that get paid overtime to our staff versus our other departments. When they're working overtime, they get comp time, which is later used as a form of leave. And so as we're looking at public safety, we noticed that the spending rate of overtime was alarmingly high. And so we started sending each department head, no matter if they earned paid overtime or comp time, we send that out to the department heads every month, so they know from Munis what is going on in their departments as well. And that's not to mean that they shouldn't know, but they may not can run all the reports that our finance staff can, just because of the way Munis is set up. So delivering information is very important to department heads in order for them to run their departments. And so in July, we started doing that. We saw overtime payouts was pretty high across public safety. It's my job, of course, to report that to our Board of Commissioners, and I did that, and to department heads. In September, to try to figure out what was going on, our Board of Commissioners voted unanimously to freeze seventy-five percent of the sheriff and jail's budget for overtime spending. Our sheriff responded, and honestly, in a great, great way, and really took a look at that. And so I added in there, he reduced overtime spending for the month of September and halfway into the month of October, based on our pace, how our pay schedules run, from sixty-four thousand dollars a month down to sixteen thousand dollars a month. And so in October, when the Board of Commissioners came back together unanimously, they again voted to unfreeze that, in appreciation, of course, for what the sheriff is doing to take a look at that overtime spending. So that's honestly just a summary of how we got here. The authority of the Board of Commissioners, I think that comes into question sometimes when it comes to a sheriff's department. We know, of course, our sheriff is an elected official by the voters of Scotland County. And so just to be clear, what authority commissioners have and what they don't have. For a sheriff's department, it was important to note here, of course, I went through these with our attorney, Mr. Johnson. Certainly don't want to put information out there that is not correct. And so you can see largely what a Board of Commissioners authority is for a sheriff's department is to set that budget. And along with a budget also comes with positions, awarding new positions. If there was freeze or reduction in force, that is up to our Board of Commissioners. They set financial policies for county departments. And of course, they, to some degree, manage access to our financial systems and our PCards. That's honestly just informational purposes. And so then, it's good to take a look, you know, Mr. Ivy talked about our sheriff comes to us annually and just gives us an update. And so this goes back to fiscal year twenty-three, and you will see, we went into Munis in fiscal year twenty-three. That's when the county went into a new financial system, and so no need, honestly, to go back any further than that. But you will see what was budgeted for our sheriff's department, and this does not include the jail, so that, because as Mr. Ivy said, they have their own budget. And so this is what was budgeted for the sheriff's department. As Mr. Ivy said, you can see that that has fluctuated over the years, but has a trend of going up for most of the time. And then, of course, fiscal year twenty-six, we're right in the middle of that. And so that's only through October, what you see for those numbers. At this time, zero dollars had been reduced from our sheriff's budget. Zero dollars are frozen right now from our sheriff's budget for this year. And then the same thing with the jail. Again, I'm not going to read these numbers, nothing has been reduced in the budget for our jail, and you can see how the cost of running a jail has increased over the years. And I failed to mention, on top is the total budget for those departments. On the bottom, it's just the salaries it takes to run a sheriff's office and a jail. And most people would know, all our department heads know, salary and fringe is most often your biggest expense for running any department. This does not includes fringe, this is only salaries. The sheriff's department has sixty-eight positions, and when I say that, that's positions that are established over many years, of course, by our Board of Commissioners. He has sixty-eight positions right now. Of course, that does not mean that they are all filled. I feel like our sheriff and our jail struggles like many other departments and many other law enforcement agencies in keeping positions filled. It's not an easy job, of course, it's a job that comes with certifications and training. And of course, as we've always talked about, in Scotland County, we're not the highest paid county either. And so he worked with all of those factors when it comes to trying to keep his positions filled. So I went in here and put out, also, it's very fair to say what type of positions he has, but also where it says, like at the top, he has sixteen BLET certified road deputy positions. Only nine of those are available right now to work the road. And meaning he's got people in BLAT, he's got vacancies, and so you'll see the numbers in red is actually what is available right now to work. And so I thought it was also important to note, we have not cut any positions in the sheriff or jail. We haven't frozen any, we have not, of course, we haven't done any decreases in pay or any decreases in benefits, so we have about sixty-eight positions that are between our sheriff and our jail. Overtime costs, because this is part of what we are here to talk about today, you can just look at the numbers, they are total numbers for our sheriff and jail. The years are combined as overtime paid over the last three years from fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-six. Ran that out to, how does that play a bigger effect on our budget? And so you know, if in two thousand twenty-five, we paid out four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in overtime, we could have hired six full-time deputies with fringe for the same amount of money. And so just looking at that, again, it gets into, and you can have all the positions if you want, but if you can't fill them, you're still not in a better position. So looking at overtime cost. And then we also had to look at individual overtime costs. Of course, we would never put names out in a public meeting and what the top four deputies made in overtime across the county. And this is in fiscal year twenty-five only. And vehicles is always a part of the budget for the sheriff's office, mainly for the sheriff's office. Clearly, they have the biggest fleet of any county in our department. And so, and they use vehicles more than any department, probably put more miles on them than any department, more hours on them. And so since we talk about vehicles a lot every year, when it's time to budget, it's appropriate to talk about what we have. We've purchased five vehicles between February and August for the sheriff's department, and I kind of go into where the money came from in order to purchase those vehicles. We have not budgeted funds in the sheriff's operating budget for vehicles in two years, nor have we budgeted funds for any department in this county for vehicle for two years. And that's mainly based on the state of the county, the need to build the general fund, and of course, the sheriff's office, we knew, or our commissioners knew, we're going to get over five hundred thousand dollars in drug seizure funds. And that, I think, this year was one of the driving factors not to budget for vehicles. We have approximately fifty-four vehicles we maintain for the sheriff's department. That does not include all the others, you know, well, I guess I would call auxiliary vehicles, things that might not get used every day, but that necessary for the sheriff's department to have. And then there's about seven of those. And so I think this is kind of me just having thoughts out there about what do we do to make sure our sheriff's office has all the vehicles they need in good working condition all the time? How can we work together to get that accomplished? And I think we can, I think we can sit down and come up with a vehicle policy that talks about how many they need, surplusing out, buying new in, and maybe setting a baseline of how many they need at all given times, and make sure they have that. And that certainly makes it easier to budget every year, when you know how many are going to be surplused out based on whatever the criteria is, maybe it's mileage, age, both, maybe it's a lemon, right? It makes it easier to budget, and I have no doubt we could work together to do that. That, a path forward, that's really, I think, what you all may end up talking about later today. That's really between this Board of Commissioners, the sheriff, and then whatever I'm asked to do to be the in-between in that process, so that's my presentation. Unless there's any questions about any of that information, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Ivy.
Okay, thank you. I guess now I'll just turn it over to sheriff and see if you've got anything particular you want to say on that or ask about or whatever. Did I hear you say, oh yeah? That's alright, if you will get closer to that mic, just so the online people can hear what you're saying.
You hear me?
Yeah.
Well, that. Okay. So we need to go back to the first PowerPoint where it says sheriff's office budget, not including jail. So this is the thing about this budget, or the whole agenda, is I'm not sure how long it took April to put this together, but I do know that Tim and I had spoken, or Chairman Ivy had spoken, about providing me with any information that they could before the meeting. And I received this thing yesterday, twenty-four hours before I sat down at this table, with all these different numbers, thinking that I wouldn't be prepared, but I know my sheriff's office. Now, up there where you see the budget for the jail and the budget spent, if you go out to the side in the red, that came out to one hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred dollars and a minus, two hundred and two twenty-one, and eight ninety-eight to the minus. But then, we gave them back in twenty twenty-five, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, which was about two hundred more, three hundred, a hundred thousand more dollars than what we used. And then if you go down to the salary budget.
I'm sorry, sheriff, what was that number?
It come out to six hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars is what we gave back to the county in that fiscal year budget of twenty twenty-five.
Which would be twenty-four. Which would be twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five. Thank you.
So, and then if you look there at facial year twenty-six, where it has, uh, that four million, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. And then you go over to the budget spent, which is one million, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Uh, we should have put something out there that said, uh, right at four months or fixing the complete four months of the budget year. Because we all know that there are three, four months in a year that equals up to twelve. So right now at one million, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. If you divide, if you multiply that times three, you'll come up with. Three million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, three hundred, three, three million, five hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Which puts us right on track if we stay at the, the one, one, nine, three. That we are running somewhere around seventeen percent under our salary budget savings. And if we stay on that for the next eight months, we'll end up giving them back another nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Now that includes overtime, that's in the salary. Now let's talk about the overtime.
I'm sorry sheriff, can I interrupt you for just a second? Um, can you clarify, is that number through the thirtieth of October or the thirtieth of September? So really you would have to multiply this number by more like four instead of by three?
You could, you could multiply it three and a half if you want to be that.
Okay, so.
It'll, you're gonna put you around six hundred thousand dollars to the good.
Yeah, I'd like, I, I thought that maybe was done through the thirtieth of September since we're. But anyway, we just, I think if we're going to be accurate, let's just make sure we understand.
We are being accurate. That's not accurate. We need to explain it, sir.
That's right. And that's what my question is about, is trying to explain whether that's thirty September or fifteen October.
How much of this budget?
This, this, this information would have been pulled last Thursday.
Yeah.
So whatever date that is, and of course what's going in on that day, isn't going to be in that number. So if we want to be super technical, what was last Thursday, the sixteenth, so through the fifteenth, exactly half, half of October, i- if you want to.
Got you. Okay, thanks.
So if we go down to the salaries, if we did the same down there at, uh, facial year, uh, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. Or to the plus, that comes out at about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Seven hundred and forty, two thousand, six hundred, two thousand, six forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-four. And it brings us down to about, uh, that's what it brings us out to. So we're still under, no, we're not under, we're still, if you ma- put it back where we're over, uh, we're still over some on that. But we need to talk about the jail budget. Because this is what, no, this is not what it includes. When I came in the office, do you know how many, uh, beds I have in the jail, Mr. O'Neil?
I do, fifty-nine, I think.
No, you're, you're about, you're about fifty-five off. I have a hundred and nine beds.
That's right. Hundred and nine beds and you got a hundred and sixty people, right?
As of this week. For the last couple of months, we were running a hundred and seventy-six, a hundred and seventy-one. That is right at sixty-nine more inmates in that jail down there that we're supposed to have. So in two thousand fourteen, when I came into office, we had four, five detention officers assigned to the detention center. Right now we have four on each shift, maybe one shift five. If I broke down him, the officers to the number of inmates that I have in that jail. It comes out to one officer supervising forty-four violent inmates, pretty much. They cannot do it. So the reason for that overtime is, is we're bringing in extra detention officers to help cover. The jails, because they have to go inside those cell blocks and do scanning. They have to be moved back and forth to court. They have to be booked in. Four officers can't handle sixty-eight more inmates. So we bring them in to help cover. Now recently, where we saw the budget come down, I just told them not to go in the cell blocks. Just don't go in the cell block. If they have a fight, let them fight. Whatever they do, they're not going to cell blocks with four detention officers trying to handle a hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-nine inmates. Them, them inmates are not being moved because the Raleigh called down and said you need to move them. Them inmates are being moved because I called them and sent an official letter because you cannot get any help for them. Not all of them, but them. Them inmates have sat over there for years now and you get no help. Maybe one visit, I'm never asked, do you need any help? They've never talked about creating positions to help me over there, but they want to argue about the overtime. That's where the overtime's coming from. And the only reason I was able to bring it down is because I left it to four officers putting pretty much on each shift. Doing the minimum way below what the state requires me to do. But no, we have enough time to run over to Richmond County and talk about building a new facility over there. But we can't even worry about what we got over here. That's the problem. They're underpaid, you have to bring folks in to help. And when you see one person with more overtime than the other, it's because everybody don't want to do it. You have the same ones that do a good job and you're gonna put people that do a good job if they want to, to come in and work. And that's why you have a couple individuals that, uh, want to, they have all the overtime. So if we can go to the, uh, let's see, let me back up. So in the year, uh. I need to back up for a minute. So let's talk about, uh. Okay, for jail budget, that comes out to forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars to the good, the next one twenty-four. Shows a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-four to the minus. Twenty-twenty-five shows two twenty-seven, oh twenty to the good. Right now we've spent seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. And if we continue on that same track, uh, I'm going to give back four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And forty-four. Four thousand, eight hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars is what we'll give back to county. Again, if we continue on that same track, under our budget, which the law gives me that authority. They'll pass my budget, they all know this, when you pass my budget, the budget is mine. Line items does not matter to me. Line items are there to keep us in line. But if you pass my budget, the law was clear that I handle my budget, not my crew manage my budget. Everything that we have up there, if this was such a big thing, we'd have, what they should have done was an audit. Called in the SBI, called in somebody, let's do an audit. But the reason for not doing the audit, because if we do it, they're going to come back and say you need more people. Now we heard earlier, I'm not going to go there yet. So if we get down to the salary. Eight hundred and sixty-six, three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars is what we'll give back on that bottom number. Based on that six, that six hundred and, what was it, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. If we continue on that track there where it says salary budget, we're going to end up giving them back three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Is what we're going to give them back. But they're going to paint a picture to you that I'm over my budget. Might be over that one little particular spot, but if I turn in anything, I haven't gone over my budget. Now, if you look up there at facial year twenty-four, where we went over two hundred and twenty, let's see, one hundred and twenty-three thousand. That twenty-six, twenty-one up there, that was the year that we had a gentleman in our sheriff's detention center back there. That had already had nine heart attacks when they brought them to me. And he was back there for, I know, two years, three years. And we were, we were constantly taking him to Durham. We even tried putting him in the state prison up there, but then when he ended up in Durham over there because of more heart attacks, we had to fork the bill. That's why we went over there.
And if I'm not mistaken, if memory serves me, it was about four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, it was. But we want to argue stuff, but we don't want to know our facts. Now they've had every opportunity to sit down with me. Only, only, only three people sat down with me up there. Bo Fazel, Tim Ivy, April Snead, and we sat down and tried to work through this. I promised Tim that I would work on the budget. I brought it down to eight thousand dollars for the sheriff's office and eight thousand some dollars for the jail. But instead, you had a couple that wanted to have this meeting. Then as of last week, they were calling, trying to cancel it and see if we could get together and meet and not have this meeting. Because they don't want you to know the truth. Go to the next slide.
So who did that?
Yeah.
Who are you accusing?
Who, who said we didn't want to have this meeting?
Cause I was, I was unaware.
Yeah, just go ahead and tell us, who, who on this board asked to cancel this meeting?
I had a meeting with Bo Fazel. And Tim Ivy and April Snead.
You said that somebody tried to cancel this meeting.
Bo Fazel.
I did not try to cancel this meeting.
You asked me when I have the meeting.
I, I asked you if you would like to talk about it before the meeting.
Now you asked BJ.
I asked BJ if he would like to talk about it, if you would like to talk about it before the meeting.
Okay. Well, we didn't have the meeting and I wouldn't have sat down at it anyway, because we need to hear, this needs to be brought up. So if we go to the sheriff's department positions where it says sixteen BLAT certified road deputy positions, four per shift, nine available. Uh, we actually have only eight right now. I have three on one shift and two on three other shifts. Where it says that two are filled with non-certified staff, one re- record analyst and one transport. That depends on, uh, which position you want to call, because I have five, I have five certified positions at the sheriff's office. That have been certified, that in the past had certified people in those positions. Because when we first came into office, none of my jail personnel were certified. They all went to school. So we end up having four bailiffs in the courtroom that were certified. Well, we only have two in there now, so, and then two are bailiffs. But those other two, where they're talking about the rec and anal, and analysis and the one transport. That just depends on where you look at it. We actually have all our openings on the deputy position except for one. That is filled with a civilian right now. On my shifts right now, I have three on one shift, two on the other three shifts. When all this was happening, we had three on A shift, three on B shift. And then we had two on C shift and two on D shift. Now C and D shift works together. They rotate day and nights, opposite of each other. A and B shift works together, but they are, they rotate, uh, opposite of each other. So when A and B shift is off, C and D shift is working. Meaning I have two people covering three hundred and nineteen square miles. Three hundred and nineteen square miles, folks. And you got people calling about response time. So what we were doing was is, is pretty much bar- borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. The smart thing to do, if you're short, you grab somebody to work the place. So we were pulling people off A and B shift that wanted to work overtime to go work C and D shift. Because I refused to put de- two deputies out there attempting to work three hundred and nineteen square miles. Now, just so you know, from May the first until today, me sitting in this chair right now. My deputies have responded to six hundred and eighty, I mean, six thousand, eight hundred ca- calls for service. Using those amount of deputies. That's where the overtime is, folks, right there. And that's only from May until now. But nobody wants to hear that. All they see is shorthanded shifts, three or four officers with overtime. And then they want to put a pre- pretty picture up there with this high overtime cost. Well, where, where else you gonna get it? I grew up in textile mill. I worked twelve hours a day at a textile mill, seven days a week. I did it at, at Laurier Carpet Mill. It's not against the law to work twelve hours a day, seven days a week. But it is with them.
No, no.
It's, it's something.
My, my que- my question is, and I, I've tried to find this in a, I researched trying to find this. And there's not a rule. There is not a rule, other than you, and, and you know this better than I will. Other than you've got to have either eight or twelve hours of rest.
That's right.
Is it eight or twelve? I, I.
Eight.
Okay. My problem, and I don't care how much overtime, I'll, I'll speak for myself. I don't care how much overtime.
I appreciate.
Cause I work probably eighty or ninety hours myself, because I work for myself. But I know I get tired. And in order for, and, and I wish this was up here, if you don't have it, I'd be glad to give it to you.
Go ahead.
Um, employee one, and I think this was for.
Eighty thousand, eighty some thousand.
Well, I'm going to break it down hourly for one month.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And I think this is September, maybe, uh, October, August, I'm sorry, it's August. Employee one worked two hundred and two hours.
Can you turn that mic down?
In the month.
He did that in three paid periods.
Okay, then somebody's lied to us.
Well, it come out the eighty, it come out the, the forty-seven hours one, one time, uh, eighty hours one time. It was wrong. We discussed that in our meeting. That stuff is wrong. You can't believe everything you see on.
I used to get loud, Jeff. We all, we all do. We can talk, we can talk shit.
Believe everything on there. I'm not saying that something was put on there and it's not a mistake. But there's no way a one man can work two.
Thank you. You see where my concern comes from? In order for a man to work two hundred and two hours overtime.
Yeah.
In a month, if you break that down, plus his forty hours a week. He's got a, he's got to average work in a hundred and five hours, uh, in a week.
I agree.
So you see where, where, where I, my eyebrow went? I, I, I know what I work and I have to, and that's seven days a week, every week for him to accumulate that many hours.
Commissioner, Commissioner Williams and I spoke about that too on the phone. I said, dude, there's no way that man worked two hundred and two hours. And when we got to look.
Okay.
That was three paid periods.
Okay. So let's give the financial folks a chance. Is, are, do we have bad data here?
It's not bad. There are three paid periods.
But I believe the three paid periods was in September and he's looking at August.
I tell you, there's. This isn't, this isn't for one month. I mean, I'm asking my finance. I mean, but do you see why I've got my, um, my eyebrows raised?
I get it.
There's no human being can do this, Jeff. And that's why I'm here. I don't care if they work a million hours, as long, cause what I, what, here's my problem. You get tired. I'm not a machine. Maybe, 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 uh, employee one is a machine. But I know I can't work no eighty or ninety hours, cause I do, without having, I gotta have some rest.
The only way that I can get these hours down is I did exactly what I did with the jail. When we came out last month at eighty, eighty-one hundred, eighty-two hundred and eighty-some hundred, forty, eighty-one hundred, I think, for the sheriff's office. And eighty-three or five for the, uh, detention center. I did exactly with my road deputies that I did with my jail. I left two out there working. And I said at twelve o'clock, don't stop a car. Just go to your calls. And if, if the calls get, if the calls get heavy, call me or one of my, my, uh, captains or mates. And we'll come out and help you, because we're not on overtime.
Right.
But that's the only way that I can reduce it, because just this week, just this week, just yesterday, I had to call people out to go to. Laurier Elementary School and Carver School because of the bum threat. That took hours. This weekend, though, I had some working off the clock at some of the events. We had the shooting there on O-Y Road in Laurier. That took us up to eight or nine o'clock at night. And there's some of this stuff, and I, I get that you understand it, Commissioner, but not everybody does.
Well, and, but I want you to understand whenever I see numbers like this, do you, do you, where I'm coming from? In a, in a, how many, how many weeks we're in August? I know some has four, some have five.
Thirty-one days.
It's thirty-one days. My eyebrow goes. My eyebrow goes, this dude can't work this many hours in a month. There ain't no way.
And I'll tell you, I'm gonna add something to this. I'm gonna be much more pragmatic about it. You have people carrying weapons, driving vehicles at high speed because they need to. They may be fighting for their life on the side of the road. They deserve the right amount of rest. They deserve to get these positions filled, so we got enough people to do the mission, right? Because if one of these officers discharges their weapon, they're gonna investigate it and look at what they had for breakfast. What medications are they taking? How much sleep did they get? How were they trained? So we can't just keep working people. So we're here to help, but requesting positions, getting vacancies filled. I mean, I don't feel like the HR department's really participating in that process to help you get these positions filled. Because anybody who's working this much overtime should be asking the question, when am I gonna get some relief? When are more people coming on to help me? So we're, our interest is twofold. Yes, we're looking at the numbers, because that's what we are. We're stewards of the resources of the taxpayers of this county. Number two, we're looking at the safety of these officers. As a retired military officer who served in a combat zone, I know what fatigue is, and I know what we ask people to do. And you don't know what's gonna be required of a person during that shift. And that is our entire interest. There is no personal animus in this. There is no intention to steer this in any other way. Our concern is genuine, and we're operating on the information we're given. And I'll tell you, in terms of engagement, I don't know anybody who's been reluctant to reach out to you. So I don't think we're, we have any caution about having a conversation. But you're also welcome to show up at any commissioner meeting at any time, and we've put you on the agenda with thirty minutes notice. So if you need positions, I think you know how to come in here and say, hey, this is what's going on. I've read the jail reports, I know the overcrowding exists, but I've never once heard a proposal to add additional jailers. Never once has it come before the commission. In the year that I've been on, and in the year I attended meetings, I never saw that request come and be declined, or even come before this board. So we're operating with good intention, but we have a duty to ask these questions, and, and we're going to. Even as uncomfortable as it is, we're gonna ask. And if you got good answers, good on you, but don't think, or don't try to, you know, convince people that we're somehow against you or public safety. We are not.
How, how many, Ralph, how many right now, I know you have some in BLET coming in?
I have, I'm, I'm, I'm nine short on the sheriff's office side. Now, uh, I think two of them, two of them, uh, happened in the last three weeks. Because I, just as I said with the budget, I'm not gonna substitute professionalism, integrity, and honesty for some jail.
I, I know about that, yeah, yeah.
So I had to release them. Uh, for failure to do their job. But I'm, I'm nine short. I have, uh, two of those positions was, uh, a solid waste, and the other one is the DSS security position. Uh, that we, I had to pull the deputy off of to put on the road. So, uh. We would have still been able, and I've tried to have the guys stop by there and walk through. Uh, but because of these overtime questions, sending somebody over there to work that probably would be happy to fill in, I, I can't do it. So it's not costing, uh, uh, DSS or the Health Department anything, because it's vacant. Out of those seven, I did try to fill them, uh, six months ago, or a little over six months ago. I had four in school. One flunked out, took seven tests, flunked out the first two weeks. The other two made it, the three made it, uh, pretty close to, uh, uh, graduating, uh, but only one did. So he actually works for me now. Now, currently, we have four, four on, on payroll, and one that's not. But he's from Scotland County, and I think we'll be able to pull all five of them, and they have, they graduate December the first. So right now, all of them are doing well, but then it's gonna take three months to train them.
Right.
And, uh, so that, that'll put us, uh, down, down two.
So, so, so Sheriff Hersey, if you had all your positions filled, would that be enough?
If I had four, if I had four on, on, all four positions filled. Uh, that would be awesome, and it would be, uh, the first time that I've ever seen in, on the highway patrol, because it's only allotted four positions. But right now, these guys have worked so short with two. One makes a difference to them. And, and of course, the calls I mentioned, uh, I, I would be scared to see what it is if we went back to January and ran it for, for the whole year. But now my detention center, not. Uh, we're four short in the detention, five now, because one, one quit yesterday going to the prison. I had three to leave to go to the prison. And what's hurting me, uh, Commissioner Fazell, is that if we don't get a hold of them before they start school, they're not gonna come to us. Because either the Laurinburg Police Department, I think they're, are they offering bonuses?
Yes, sir.
They don't, they offer sign-on bonus. So if somebody hears a couple thousand dollar sign-on bonus, and you know they're gonna go that direction. When, if they come and start over there at Laurinburg Police Department, they're gonna be making four, five thousand more dollars. And we all appreciate the raise you gave us a couple years ago. It surely helped with cost of living. But every time we get a pay raise, Laurinburg Police Department matches it, or they give them more. So all the agencies around me, I was talking with Sheriff Gullidge this morning, and they provide, I think he said with a little bonus. I know Moore County does, but they put this nice ad out there, and they give these incentives that we just can't give to get good help. Now, I, you can hire people that show up. You know what I mean? There's some people I've hired four times since I've been sheriff, and I've had to fire them four times.
Well, my, well, my question is to you, Sheriff. My question is, is, the study shows that we could hire six more deputies with just the overtime. I mean, do, do we, and my question is, do we have enough deputies? Do we have enough deputies running the road?
I could cut down, so that we're, we, I clear up the deputy. That deputy overtime is not all coming from road, uh, answering calls on the road. Uh, most of them are cross-trained, because we're such a smart, a small agency. Uh, we send them detention school if we can, or if they leave detention school, they're going to jail. I have three right now that are detention officers for me that's in school. So that they can cross-train and go over to the jail and work, and be able to walk out on the floor, where a civilian can't do that. So, but the other ones are filling in here, and we've talked about this recently with Judge Futrell. I have four officers in the courtroom, and I remember the help that you gave us. They used to be, those used to be four deputy positions. Now I have two deputies and three civilian bailiffs, right? But they're in deputy positions, because that's all I have to put them in. They're drawing a pay, but they're just not getting the, the benefits. So we, so we use them. Do I want them positions reclassified? No, sir, I don't, because my intentions is, is convince these to go to BLET school, and then once they do finish, they're already in the position, and we don't have to get it reclassified. And they start making the benefits that a deputy being certified would receive. But we, when I left this morning, we had three hundred and some people in the courtroom. Uh, the line has got where they line up all the way around the, the, the sidewalk to the parking lot over there where Herman's, Herman's is. And we only have one people at, one person at the door. Uh, uh, Bailiff, uh, Latoya Williams. It's impossible for one person to handle that much traffic and check them thoroughly and not miss something. Because we have the old antique, uh, scanner. And I'll, I'll, I'll get to the scanner here in a little bit, that, that's gonna help us. But, uh, so Judge Rue wants two in his courtroom. Futrell will take two, but he like to have four. So that's four. That's four in courtroom A. One, we didn't have one for courtroom B this morning, because two had to go to, uh, uh, Judge Ruth. Then we had one at the door, and then, uh, ten ended up over there. Yeah, we did put one. So we had, we had two courtrooms covered, but we still had, uh, several. So we're averaging about three, three courts, sometimes four if it's small claims and stuff. And, and it doesn't, it, it doesn't consider if the judge wants you to, 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 to run, pick something up for him. Or you gotta escort somebody to the clerk's office, or one of the deputies have to serve a paper. So some of our overtime is coming from that, because that's what Judge Futrell demands. I talked with him last week, and I asked him for a magic number. Uh, April and I just met with him. Uh, here, here, last month, I think it was, and he says eight. But right now, I'm four short in the detention center. So I don't know what A to do really good right now in the courtroom, because you can't keep qualified people.
Well, Sheriff, we understand, we understand the struggle you, you have, because anybody that's in business has got that same struggle of keeping hip. You know, what concerns us, though, is what Commissioner Shelley said about one man working two hundred hours, which I thought was in thirty days too. And, uh, and that.
Still too many hours.
And that's very dangerous, that's, that's just dangerous.
I agree with you, everything you're saying about the comp time, but I don't have the means of fixing it.
And, and, and that's what, and that's what we need to take care of.
Well, I, go ahead, bud.
And that's what we need, and that's the purpose of this meeting. We need to figure out what the problem is and how to fix the problem, and not, not attack each other, but let's fix the problem. Let's, let's, let's move past this, let's fix the problem. If we need more officers, then we need to get more officers, because we can hire six with overtime that we're spending.
So I have a question that, this is what I've been told. When an officer goes in to BL, BLET's, the school, the county pays for that, correct?
We just started that.
Okay, so, that's wonderful. I got no problem with that. But I've also understood that they go through it, and then they find a job elsewhere that pays more. But we've, we have, I mean, tell me if I'm right or wrong, I'm just telling you what I've heard.
Is there, is there some kind of contract where they have to sign?
Yeah, that's my, I guess, do they have to work in this county a certain amount of time before they can do that?
We have them to sign a contract, that contract says they must work for the Scotland County Sheriff's Office for twenty-four months. That's the contract we got drawn up now.
Okay.
We've only had one to graduate successfully since we started this program, and he is still with us now. So we have not paid for anybody to go to school that has left.
Okay.
Four out of, three out of the four didn't make it through the last academy, and the one that did make it, he's still with us, and this is our second year doing it, and we got five in there now.
Well, I'll tell you, I'd like to go on record here around, let us help you fill the vacant positions. I don't think we can get a handle on overtime until we get a hundred percent manned. So I think that has to be a priority. Also, I'll go on record saying I support sign-on bonuses or retention bonuses. That makes a lot more sense than working some guy an ungodly amount of hours to try to cover a hole that we're not fixing. So, you know, if, the one commitment I'll make, and I, I think maybe other commissioners will feel the same way. We'll do whatever, the county government will bring the resources to bear to try to help you fill these positions. But staying like this is unsustainable.
I saw you last week, sir, at John Blue, and I was out there to help offset this overtime, because I don't get overtime. None of my captains, but I was out there, and it was raining. You, you, you saw it there. It was raining, I was out there, uh, I, we're, and I, and I appreciate what you just said. We're doing everything that we can. If I could go over there and go through the six-month BLET school, and I'm sixty-four years old, and I probably could make it. I would, could at least make it past a week, you know? But I'd go over there and do the school and take the test and everything for them, if that was what it allowed to do. Our problem is not, uh, starts from the schoolhouse.
Thank you.
We know that. It's, it's not, and, and that's why they can't do this. Some of them can't take a written test, and so, uh, but I, I appreciate that.
But I mean, every rural county is fighting the same battle, right? If you were trying to recruit in Robinson County, Columbus, Anson, you're probably fighting a lot of the same things. My thing is, let us be a part of the solution. If you come to us and say, hey, I'd like to look at some sort of retention incentive to try to make this better, we're all ears. But I think what we've done is we've said to you, hey, Sheriff, it's your department, you take care of recruiting, we're here to help. And then we're not, we're not getting there, because this vacancy situation didn't start in August.
No, no, it didn't.
It's been a chronic, ongoing problem, and the outcome of it has been an overtime budget that really is kind of masking the problem. So we have got to get more aggressive on the recruiting, retention side of the house.
Governor Stein spoke on this several times as he was Attorney General about, uh, the, 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 the applicants that are showing up to become basic law enforcement officers. That they're, they're not qualified. The, the ones that are qualified are going to other places. I had, I had my transport officer, he left, uh, week before last, and he's gone to teach school. And, uh, uh, so that hurt me there. So.
Well, and, and I think, and I'll, I'll say it, I'll go on record. Nobody wants to be in law enforcement anymore, because y'all, you guys have got an undeserving black eye, and I mean that across this country.
He spoke at the.
And that's bad.
He spoke at the sheriff's conference, uh, this year about, uh, what law enforcement officers are facing, uh, overtime pay, vacancies. And then he actually did a news article where he encouraged the legislatures to pass a law to do some funding to local law enforcement officers. Now, he has a program called a Blue Fellow, the Blue Fellow Program, something like that, where if a person would go to school, and if it's in criminal justice, and he completes school and go to work at a, at somewhere in the criminal justice field, they'll pay for their scholarship. Uh, but I've put that out there. I'm shocked at the number of people you get to like stuff. If you could put something out there bad, and you have two hundred, three hundred likes, you put something out there encouraging, they won't do it. So, uh.
Well, let's do a full court press with Monty and her team, and let's, let's get these vacancies filled. Let's make a commitment to work on that, and I mean in a meaningful, take it as a mission that we gotta get done, because as long as you're looking at lots of vacancies, we're not gonna get there. And, and you can shout at people, you can tell them, stop all that, but that's not the solution long-term. The solution is, let's get people in here ready to saddle up and go to work, so someone else doesn't get stuck working an extra shift.
Mark Gullidge is nine short right now, spoke with him this morning. Uh, he couldn't share with me what his overtime was. I do know Guilford County, uh, last year alone spent three point nine million dollars for their sheriff's office overtime. And I pull up different locations, Robinson County, Bernice Wilkins, Hope County, municipalities. There's not a soul, it's not a, a entity that's not having an issue with it. And, uh, but somewhere, we, we do have to come up with some incentives, because he teaches the school over there, and they're gone. If, if we don't talk with them before they start school, uh, they'll snatch them up the minute they walk in. I think they stand over there at RCC, the sheriff's do, and they wait for them to pull in. And, uh, and when you, when you're standing there saying, I can give you a job, start and pay, or hire and pay at thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand, now since you're certified, I think you get a little bit more. And then they start you out at forty-four, and then they're gonna give them an incentive to sign on. Uh, it, it just, it, it changed my attitude.
Well, we have a commissioner meeting, and I think probably ten days, twelve, thirteen days. If you guys come up with a plan, work with Monty, let's bring something to the Board of Commissioners, and let's, let's see what we can do, because we get it. But I guess our point of being here today is that we have an unsustainable solution physically and financially. We just can't do it, and, um.
I'll tell you what it feels like. It feels like, and I wasn't there then, but I can imagine what the people of Israel felt like when Old Moses showed up on the scene and says, and Pharaoh says, listen, you're gonna have to keep making bricks, but now you need to make the double number of bricks, and you're gonna go pick up your own straw. And sometimes that's the way it's felt. And sometimes that's the way it's felt like over here on this side. Because maybe y'all don't see us doing something, but over here, we're trying to do everything we can.
There's never been a question about the quality of public safety. I've never heard those words uttered whatsoever in this conversation. The only thing we've really talked about is the impact on the individuals and the impact on our budgets. And let's face it, we're in a county where we really have to pay attention to what we're doing financially. Because it's, it's a difficult environment in that way. And we need to pay attention and do the best we can. And, and that's what we're trying to do.
And, and I don't mean this in a, in a bad way. Sheriff, come to us and tell us. I mean, I've been on here, I've been on here since January. And a lot of this stuff that, that you're talking about now, I don't know that I've heard it. And y'all can go, ah, he has. No, he hadn't.
Let, let's, and, and maybe we should.
And just, we need to have more, I think we need to have more open dialogue with the sheriff department. Whether it's you, BJ, Jason, whoever. We ju- I, I think, you know, I, I, and I, I'm not being a smart aleck when I say this, but I'm not a mind reader. I'm literally not a mind reader. And I don't know, I don't, I know y'all been short. I've never seen these, these numbers though. I've never realized how short. I knew it was bad.
Well, I didn't know it was bad until, because we've been passing every August. I have no reason to.
I'm not saying, but I'm just saying, a lot of this could have been avoided, I think, if we just had some dialogue.
I, I agree with Commissioner Shelley. I think there's been a breakdown in communication between the commissioners and the sheriff's department.
Well, let's, 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 let's get to a, 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 a meeting of, of what we're.
Here for.
Here for. And, 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 and I think, and, and if you filled every available position in the sheriff's department today. Jail, road deputies, clerks, whatever you needed, that's showing up there. Um, that's, that's open positions. We're still not gonna cut out overtime. There's still gonna be cases where a deputy's on a call at six o'clock and he's supposed to get off at six-thirty and I'm making these times up. But he's stuck on that call to nine o'clock or whatever the case might, it, it's gonna happen. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna completely cut it out. But I think if you go back and put together a plan for us and say, this is what I need on a, on a hiring. Uh, an incentives basis, of, of, a retention basis, whatever the case may be. Because lord knows, it's like Jeff said, I'm sure it's, it's a hard environment out there for law enforcement now. And it's not anything that they've done, um, it's just, it's just the environment we're in. And, and there's not people, you know, there used to be days where people were lined up to go to work for the sheriff's office or police department. Or even highway patrol was big, you know? It was something to get on the highway patrol and back in the day. Now they're out having to heavy recruit, you know, just to get people to fill cars. And, and, and so it's not a, i- it's not a hu- highly sought out environment right now. And, and s- go back to the BLET thing just a little bit. Um, something that I learned in the last week or maybe the last two weeks. Was, you know, there used to be a time when sheriff could hire, he could pick you and say, Al Blade, you, you hired as a deputy, raise your right hand. Here's your car, here's your badge, go to work. But, and you had a year to complete the BLET. Um, you don't have that anymore. I think standards have changed that to where you can't put them out on the road until they have a BLET certification. Now, that's good because that's, they probably need that. But it's also, you know, it fills a hole that you could use for, for certain things when, when, when you're, when you're unavailable. So, but, but I think what we're hearing here today is, is if, if sit down with whoever you wanna sit down with. You let, you know, and, and let's come up with a, a package of, of here's what I need, people-wise, dollar-wise, incentive-wise. And, and, and then we'll be back here in ten days or whatever the number is. And, and we can take that up at that time and move on from there. Because, I mean, you know, we talk about it, it's all, it all goes back to the, to money. And, and Ed's right, we're, you know, you know, you think spending fifty thousand dollars on a fifty million dollar budget's a big deal. Well, in this county, it's a big deal. And, and, you know, we don't have money laying around in, in, in different spots. But, but there's always things we can do to, to free up assets if we need to do that. Um, and, and I, I don't know anybody up here that would be against that at, for any, any, any reason. So, um, I will commend you on the overtime. You know, I met with you the day after that report came to us. And it was a pretty high number, whatever the number was on that, that report. Um, and I say instantly, but within the first month, that was dropped by seventy-five percent. And I think it was just a matter of focusing on that issue, uh, or looking at it, you know, and, and not to knock you. But maybe we hadn't looked at it strong enough at the time. But, but I, I don't, I don't sit here with any expectation to say overtime is gonna go away, period.
No.
Um, you know, even if you fill everything up there, uh, it's just not gonna happen. But, but I do think, you know, that, that we were on to, we were, we were on a track to spend about six hundred thousand dollars in a year just on overtime. And, and of course, you know, we can't do that. We, we just don't have the ability to do that. And we definitely can't turn to the public and say, you know, hey, we gotta change your tax rate because whatever the case may be. And jack your rate up five cent on a hundred and, and that's what that would have caused. And, uh, so, um, but anyway, I'm not, I don't wanna belittle that. But I, I do think the sheriff has done a good job at looking at this of, and, and, and putting in some proactive plans. But eh, you know, as far as the hiring and retention, I think there's more things we can do. But you're gonna have to tell us. I can't tell you how to run or hire a sheriff's deputy or what to do to run a sheriff's department. Ain't got an idea about it in the world. All I know, you're supposed to lock the jail door. That's all. That's all I know. And, and, um, and so, you know, that, that's what I would ask that we do right now is, is go back and tell us what you need.
Well, I've got another question. So Sheriff.
We're not done, are we?
No, no, I'm just.
No, I, I have another question for you.
Uh, let's talk about the cars for just a second. Uh, so the report shows that you have thirty-nine BLET certified positions. Which should take thirty-nine cars. You have fifty-four vehicles you're maintaining.
Fifty-five.
Okay, seven other vehicles, auxiliary transport vehicles and vans and ATVs. Are we keeping the older vehicles for some reason?
Let me get to that, cause we, we jumped the slide here.
Okay. Oh, I apologize.
No, that's all right. So I'll tell you exactly. Uh, I can tell you right off, the problem that I'm having right now is we have. Here we go. So, if I can run this by you and, and then I'll lead into the cars.
Okay.
We have fifty-five total cars. And I'm gonna skip the ATV, that stuff. But we have fifty-five total cars, twenty-four cars are over a hundred thousand miles. Twenty-twelve are over a hundred and fifty thousand miles. Four are over a hundred and ninety-four thousand miles. Three are over two hundred thousand miles and one is over three hundred and nine thousand miles. Now, we have. We have seven vehicles that are in the parking lot right now to be surplus. The reason why we haven't been able to put them over at the county parking lot is, is somebody has to take the equipment out of the cars. Because what we try to do is use that equipment again and not, on the next vehicle, we not buy all new equipment. So it has to be taken out just like it was put in. And the problem is, uh, if we try to work, Matt Warren, our lieutenant, we try to work it out with him to do so. And it's either a day that he's working, uh, because if not, he's, uh, he's either gonna be overtime. Or we're gonna have to pay him like we pay any other, like a vendor. But then that would probably turn into an issue because when you start dealing with vendors, you kinda got to be fair and impartial to everybody. And what do you think the normal cost is, Jason? The strip a car?
With the hours involved with these, uh, you look at six, seven hours, whatever his hourly radius. Take it apart and you put it back together so you can surplus for twelve hours.
So, so, so we, that, we got that many. Seven that we're gonna be bringing over to Peden Street. And then we have.
Now, that seven is part of the fifty-five, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Right, Jason?
That's right.
And then we have. We have eight that are on the lot. That we're trying to save or, and still use. Eight that's on the lot. Now, five of them, five of them, and this is all the other vehicles I have, the rest of them have been issued out. Five of them will go to the five new cadets if they graduate. And so, that leaves me three spares. And, uh, the good thing about those cars or not is. Is they, uh, the oldest one is a two thousand and eighteen model or two thousand and sixteen model. I have three on here that are twenty-twenty-two's. And, uh. The highest that we have spent on repairs on a car. Fourteen thousand dollars.
Sir, let me ask a question real quick. Base car, no equipment. How much is, how much does a car cost?
Depends on what you go with, Charger or Explorer.
Let's go, I mean, I'm not going for, I'm, I'm not going for the highest.
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-two thousand?
Two-five, forty-three issues.
Okay. Um, my next question, so how many miles does, does your average car have to wa- to? How many miles does the average car have when you guys, or not just you, but law enforcement in general, and not just pointing you guys out. Say this car's no longer in use?
The highway patrol tried to, I think now, uh, service theirs out at about a hundred and fifty thousand.
They, they get, they get rid of that car?
Yeah, because then they, they resell it to a small municipality or someone. Uh, we've never, we were shooting for a hundred and fifty thousand. But we've been on that path ever since I come in the office. And, uh, we, we, uh, uh. But I think we've normally, most time we've ended up around at two hundred thousand. I, I think what's hurt us, or I know what's hurt us over the last couple of years. It's not just, uh, let's say cars, but the ones that we purchased. I mean, we, we, we had three, uh, and one was a twenty-three model. We've had twenty-twenty-two Durango's that we're already at seven and eight thousand dollars on repairs. The water pumps is not holding up, the radiator's not holding up. And I would have never, so we just switched to Fords.
So, can I, eh, eh, are, are you, are you required to use a certain brand?
A what? Vehicle?
Yeah.
No, you're talking about a particular model or make?
Make, yeah.
No, we weren't going with Dodge Chargers, uh. We switched to Fords. It was, we went to the Dodge, uh, 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 Durango's. And, uh, we, we tried to look and see what reviews they've had on them and stuff, but we wasn't seeing a lot. Uh, it worked great for the K-9 officer and, and deputies, I mean, uh, road, road lieutenants. And so, and then we got them at that, uh, 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 government deal. So, uh, but we found out with the last two Explorers, three Explorers, how many? We have three Explorers now and no problems. And, and.
Well, that's the reason I was asking.
Two of those Explorers.
Aren't worth messing with.
With the, the drug, uh, tr- uh, trust, the M, M-A trust fund is, we bought Explorers. And everything that we've purchased since then, uh, we've tried to go with that. And, uh.
How often do y'all, do y'all have your maintenance done? Oil changed?
We have maintenance done every six, every six thousand miles. And during that, during that maintenance, uh, a full service is done, tire rotation, uh. So forth. We, we use, just so you know, we use Ed's, we use Lucas, we use Scotland Motors. Uh, we, we try to keep it at home.
Mm-hmm.
And one time we were talking about the garage, but I don't think Jory right now can handle the, the load of cars. And, and I think y'all were talking about building a building at someplace.
Yeah, we.
But, uh, uh. We, uh.
Can I interject for just a second? I think this is an excellent opportunity to work with the sheriff's office, to come up. What I, what I hear every talking, everybody talking about is, well, we hope to surplus them at this mileage, but it doesn't happen. If we hoped this, but it doesn't happen. But it's the perfect time to come up with a vehicle policy as a county that we're gonna stick to, that works for the sheriff. And if, if, you know, if the mileage is a hundred and fifty and you say that car's had enough because it's got too many hours on it, X, Y, and Z. Then we gotta stick to that and say, okay, it's gotta get surplus and it's time to get a new one. Um, I, I just think it's an opportunity to do that.
We tried to do that. Uh, and this goes back before anybody else is sitting here now. We tried to do that, um, to some extent. And we were budgeting seven and eight, correct me if I'm wrong, seven or eight cars every year. But then politics got involved and you would have somebody on the board wanting to cut that to five cars. And, and, or whatever, and, and we may end up with six instead. So, um, uh, you know, that, that, that played into some of it.
We've never had a policy to follow. And I, I think the policy would drive what has to go in the budget.
Right, right, right.
We're just coming up with a random.
Have we looked at any kind of lease programs, Sheriff?
Well, can I, can I speak to that? Being from a company that used to do law enforcement leases and did it for the North Carolina Highway Patrol, that's the last thing you want. It'll cost you, it'll, you'll, you'll, you'll pay more than the cars if you just bought the thing. Because you're still responsible for all the maintenance on it and anything that happens to it, insurance, that kind of thing. It sounds like a great idea, but I think we even saw it internally with those six. And I'm going way back fifteen years ago, whatever, those six Tauruses that we ended up having on a lease. That, that ended up being a, a nightmare when it come time. It's okay during the time, but at the end of that lease, that's a puppy you got there. So, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. Eh, there's some areas out there that leases make sense for vehicles, for business vehicles or whatnot. But the, the law enforcement plans that are out there, you're gonna pay a forty-three thousand dollar car. You're gonna purchase it a hundred and fifty thousand miles. And, and you're gonna end up paying forty-seven, forty-eight thousand on the lease, plus you've kept up the maintenance and everything in between. And, and that's designed, um. The reason, the benefit of that on the larger fleets that do it is because of, of keeping up with the vehicles and the mileage and the maintenance and what needs to be done. So there's some benefit of it. Our fleet isn't big enough to do that. So, um.
Okay.
But I think April's got a point. I think we need to have a policy around this so that you get the number of vehicles that you need. Based on road officers and responsibilities that require official vehicles. And I think we ought to make a commitment to, to support that. Um, I don't, I can't see a policy promising a certain number of cars a year. Because we don't know what the utilization will be. But I think if our intention is to cycle cars off at a hundred and fifty thousand miles. And that car gets moved to a school resource officer or some other position that doesn't do a lot of driving. I think we can come up with a manageable process. But I think doing it when it's a crisis is the worst possible way to manage something like this. Um, fifty-some cars is not what's parked at my house. I mean, this is a totally different animal when you're managing that much. So I think we do need a policy. You need some predictability from us. And, uh, we need to understand what's gonna happen with these vehicles and do it in a timely way. Um, as far as refitting vehicles, I mean, twelve hours of decommission and get a vehicle ready for surplus, that's a big investment. So we've gotta, we gotta figure out a way. And it sounds like working a lieutenant all overtime to do it is not the answer, right? Or taking a lieutenant away from their official duties to start unscrewing wires from underneath the dash. That's not smart utilization of people. So let's figure something else out. There's gotta be a way. There's some enterprising business out there that probably knows how to do this.
Well, I think there used to be a couple local that did it, but I'm not aware of any that do it now, not local.
I've taken ours, uh, Dar- where? Darlington.
Yeah, I, I knew there was, but there was a couple local that did, you know, stuff.
I hope we can find somebody local, that's a big investment, just getting a vehicle down there and back, but, um.
It's just like our, our, if I may say this, it's just like our new Explorers we, we purchased too. Uh, with, with the funds back there from, from the inmate fund. Normally, within a year's time, we've done, I come in and say, we did six hundred, done six hundred transports, and that's just one way. IVC, involuntary commitment transports. As of today. We're at six hundred and ninety-seven, and we're ten months into it with four months to go. So we're probably gonna hit about a thousand one-way IVC. Transports, and then we have to go pick them up. Uh, we, I figured it out. Uh, that comes out to about. Uh, right now, about three hundred and fifty transports for my two officers. And if you add all those mileage, if you just do with an average distance, because we'd go all the way to a Husky or we'd go to Holly Hill. Uh, the average is a hundred and fifty miles, so within, within this time period of ten months. We have put about fifty-two thousand miles on each car.
And I'll tell you, Sheriff, this is one thing we're working on as well, the county manager and I have been talking to Trillium, they have a. Urgent care for mental health that's based out of Lumberton, they have a mobile crisis team. Because we understand that driving to Greenville and back is a huge resource suck for you, a lot of time, expense, everything else. And if we can bring some other things to bear to make this a little bit easier. Um, we'd certainly like to do that, because we know it's a strain to do it. And we need other options, and we're working hard on your behalf because. IVCs impact your department the most in our, in county government, so we get it and we're trying.
It, it, at one point in time, it was not. That bad. It was, you'd still be transporting. But, uh, a certain Attorney General years ago changed all transports to go to the sheriff's office, where it used to be split in half. If they were from the city, they took them, if it was from the county, we took them. Now, now, uh. It's just us. And you might occasionally, uh, somebody from another agency may take one to, to Southeastern, but that's as far as they're gonna go. And, uh, so what we've tried to do is recover some funds because we bill. If, if they live from another county, people come from Marlboro County, we won't take them home, but if they go to Scott Memorial, we take them up the road. So we can bill Marlboro County for the mileage and, uh, uh, the fees. If they're from another county, we bill that sheriff's office for the fees. So we've tried to make some monies back to help offset, uh, the, the budget. And we've done the same thing in the jail with, uh, the vendors. Some vendors give you more, keep back on percentage of, of, of what they're using, and, and of course, we, we take those monies and it goes back in. So, it's, uh. The downside of the IVCs is, is they can only sit there for twenty-four hours, from what I know. And it's fixing to get worse, because there's only one more step and it's probably gonna go in effect in December. Anytime, uh, any of our officers, Lornburg Police Department, probation, or anybody. If they make any charges with anybody, when they go before the magistrate. If, if, when they're gonna do a check, if that person has been in a twenty-four hour facility in the last three years, they cannot go to the jail. They have to go to the hospital, they got to be evaluated whether they look crazy, have any issues or not. Right?
Yeah.
Help me say that. And so, uh, they're gonna have to be evaluated, which means now officers are gonna have to sit with them. So now we gotta be protected and make sure that, uh, other agencies don't slip one in on this where we can get stuck with, with watching them, so. Uh, I don't know how that, that, that mess is gonna work out. I won't be here that long to, to worry about it. But, uh, it's gonna be somebody else's nightmare. But I will say this too. Um. We had a plan worked out on the vehicles. And I think that's where maybe we got, uh, sidetracked on a little bit, how this thing was gonna work, because. We, it went all the way up to. Uh, thirty, thirty-six?
Twenty, thirty-six.
Twenty, twenty, thirty-six. On vehicles, and we started out with seven, five, five, the rest of them is gonna be five cars. Uh. But I can't remember if.
Yeah, I, I think you, you're right, Sheriff, he's referencing, um, he's referencing like the twenty-year capital plan.
That's right, yeah.
And it, it's five, five, five every year.
Yeah.
On vehicles, and Mr. Ivy's right. Somewhere along the way, i- it took a left turn and, and it didn't happen, so. I, I think what I'm proposing, instead of just putting a number on it every year, why don't we get what we need? And, and what we've agreed to you have to have, right, um?
And hopefully we can get in a normal rhythm of moving these out and cycling these vehicles, but. Um, I'll tell you, every budget year, we deal with extraordinary expenses. And, um, we've delayed retrofitting ambulances, you know? Um, we've kicked the can on two of those. Very important function in our community, but we've gotta make some awful hard budget decisions and. We need to make those in an informed way, but. Make them so they, they help us, right? So, this is the challenge, and I think this is why the dialogue between the sheriff and the commissioners are so important. And we just gotta, we gotta keep this up, and we've gotta come with solutions, right? So if we talk about how we're gonna hire more officers, we need a proposal, work with money, come up with something. That we can at least look at and get behind, if it's on the vehicle side, work with the county manager, let's see what we can do. And then it's up to us, the commissioners, to allocate the resources the best we can. But I'll tell you, the last couple of years that I've witnessed, we have made some. Our healthcare premium for our employees went up a million dollars in one year. Now, I don't know about you, but that's a tough thing to find in your budget, is where are you gonna get an extra million dollars to continue the healthcare coverage? You promised the people who work for this county. So, we're not here squabbling about nickels, this stuff really adds up, and we've had to make some extraordinarily difficult decisions. And so, I would just say, hey, let's bring a plan and give us a chance to work it out.
I would say that there's drug seizure fund money, we intentionally didn't budget cars, but there was, we knew that money was coming in. But there's enough in there for four right now, so. But you do it how you, you, you know, you know.
I, I, it's funny, Chairman, you brought it up, because I was fixing to bring that up too. I just, I want the folks to know, because I think the way that it's put on there. It, it, uh, maybe I read too deep into things, but the way I read that thing, if I was the public, it would be almost like, uh. We. Well, if they didn't buy vehicles with the vehicle, with that money, what did they use it for? That's what it sounds like to me, if you saw five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on there, you'd think, what did they do with it? Well, what I would like for them to know is, is. We, we didn't misuse it, we took the monies, and we, we had planned on that money. And, and this has nothing to do with, with the cars, I just want you to know what we did with, with the money. Is we took the monies and we bought equipment that we needed for a while.
She's gonna put it up on the screen.
Yeah.
Where's your drug seizure stuff, right here?
This, this, this money was, was seized from a local, uh, drug dealer in Scotland County. When, when he was stopped, he had over a million dollars on him in cash, and we seized the money. Well, the SBI and the FBI got involved, fed the feds. And the feds end up adopting the case, because a lot of people don't understand this, everything that the sheriff's office does, or the city police department does. Uh, when you're seizing, when you're seizing drugs, or you're seizing money, or, or we have an overflow of weapons that. Uh, that they either wanna destroy, we can do a, a sale on them, every dollar that we make goes to the school system. Nothing comes to us after anything that we do. And the only way around that is, is get the feds involved. So when the, if the feds will adopt the case, they'll charge the person, they'll take the money, and then we had to wait about a year or so for it. And, uh, the case was taken care of, and the money come, was released. But fifteen percent went to the SBI, twenty percent went to the, the, no, twenty percent went to the FBI. I think fifteen percent went to the SBI, and we got the remaining of it, which was five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So what we did with that money was, is, is. Uh, yeah, I could've went and bought vehicles with it, but at that time, there were some other things we needed, which was.
Body.
Body cameras, uh, tasers. Um. Firearms, things that we hadn't, we hadn't purchased since I came into office, and the ones that we had was, was worn out, we had. So, we put a, 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 a new scanning system in the jail. We did, uh, we bought.
Drone software.
We brought drone software, we put, uh, we bought, uh, two vehicles with it, like, uh, the county manager said. The two Tahos, and, oh, you got it on there? I'm sitting here looking at now. But anyway, there was a lot that we did with it. That, uh. And, and then there were some that was, that, that we didn't have to buy, so my next project is, what I wanna buy is. Is to fix that problem up at the jail. Uh, that scanning system, I think is probably twenty-five years old or longer. I know it was there when I came back here in nineteen ninety-six as a trooper. And, uh, it just doesn't work good. You've, you gotta let them walk through there, and then you got to take the hand, handheld scan, and you can scan, so for about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we can get the x-ray machine to put down there. They slide their stuff through there, it's x-ray, and then they walk inside just like at the airport at x-ray. And it sends them on, because this is the problem we're having in the courthouse now. When they had a policy of no phones, that was the easiest thing to fix. But now, they've implemented that certain people can bring cell phones into the clerk, the courtroom. Those that might have a medical issue, that their phone goes off and lets them know different things. So you imagine what it's like standing at that door, one person trying to weigh people in, and then there's a form they have to sign that, that. They're, they're, to take that phone in there, it just can't happen with, with that one person there, it's just, it's just, it's crazy. So that's what we talked about in the last day or two, was buying that scanning system. Because all these things we would have to ask, we would end up asking on our net, a budget. Uh, when we start doing next year's budget for, so we've been able to buy those things, which has saved, saved us from having to fund them, uh, through the county. And, uh. It'd been nice if I got the million dollars, but it just didn't work out that way, but. It, uh, that's where the monies went.
Well, Sheriff, let's, uh, let's talk about this just a second here. Uh, I was talking about communication earlier with, between the county finance department and the sher- and the sheriff's department. Uh, we bought body cams. And what, where was the breakdown in the communication on the body cams? And, and in that breakdown, we lost a fifty thousand dollar grant, where was that breakdown at?
I have no idea, we, we were told, we were told to wait on the body cams. Uh, for the grant. We never purchased the body cams. They sent the body cameras, but we, we never paid the invoice for the body cameras, so they weren't purchased. Now, whatever happened after that, uh, Commissioner, I don't know.
I make an assumption on that, that, that if you. Because most of these grants, whether we purchased them or we didn't pay for them, if the date is before the grant is approved, then it, you know, that's kinda what happened with the railroad thing, that. That it was, the date it happened before the grant was finalized or approved and, or signed in.
I don't know where.
I don't know.
I don't know.
This one was federal reg, so they're, they're pretty strict about.
But I think that's, I think that's where, I think that's where that.
But I think as Commissioner Frisell points out, this is a communication problem, and it's an oops that costs fifty grand. That's a significant, I don't care how you cut it, that's a significant expenditure that we could have avoided, so. I think his point that we need to lash up this communication is, is right on, because I think we could have avoided a problem.
That is true, there had, there was some communication during this timeframe, when we requested the PO back when our budget first got turned on in July. Um, a couple of weeks had went by, hadn't heard anything. It's, there is a state law right now, if your ag- if your county has a certain population, you're required to have body cams.
Officer Knight, who were you communicating with?
Um, I'm about to get there, uh, that was gonna be, um, April Sneed, and I spoke with, uh, Madison Mayfield, the, um, Exxon representative. So, um, after a couple of weeks went by, hadn't heard anything about it, we went on to tell them, well, we got the drug funds, it's gonna be paid for, let's go ahead and get the stuff. Well, then that's whenever I was notified about the grant, hey, if we go ahead and order this too soon, if we're in the process, then we can end up losing the money. So, I got a message from Madison Mayfield on August the first. Just left you a voicemail, but, um, I have great news, our shipping team is reaching out to your T, for your T ten shipping date. That, if they're able to ship earlier than expected, I'll let you know. I've responded back, I said, per our county office, um, can we have these shipped later on in October pending grant approval? If we received prior to the grant, the grant could be denied. Our county manager is also coordinating with our IT for installing storage, I can provide you with a certified letter with an intent to purchase, if this helps. I just hate to throw away a fifty thousand dollar grant. So at this point here on August the sixth, I was working my, but I was trying to save that fifty thousand dollars. Madison responded back to me on August the sixth and said, good evening, sir, thank you for the update, that won't be a problem, I'll let our team know. Once that took place, then all of a sudden, everything just shows up at the sheriff's office, we started getting packages in, and we're still getting packages in, I don't know why they just don't send everything at one time, but you get three boxes today. You might get eight last week, and everything's still coming in. So, um, we got Chelsea involved and everything, so, um, so then what I done, I talked to Madison, I said, look, we received our equipment. However, we wanted to hold off on this purchase until October. She says, if you look on our end, um, we got everything in a held state, she said, nobody can even tell that you have a order in with Exxon right now. Because they got it in a hold status, pending billing and everything. So, I didn't wanna take her word for it, so what did I do? I just called a regular Exxon one-eight-hundred number, instead of talking to my field rep, and I spoke to just somebody, I said, um, can you check the status of my order, please? Okay, where do you work at? Scotland County Sheriff's Office, they were unable to identify that we had any order whatsoever because it was on hold. So, where the, where the issue came in, where they said we ordered it too early and all that stuff, Exxon, up until middle of September, they didn't even have a record showing that we had an order in. And then, um, I know some emails got out, some word had got out saying that we lost the grant because of this, and we purchased it. But if you look up there on the thing, the bill was just paid October the tenth, that was this past week. Uh, the grant ended, we got word that, that we didn't get the grant back, um, Joey has sent me an email. Week or two ago, let me know that we didn't get the grant, then on Oc- um, October the sixth, that's whenever I received the invoice for the company to actually pay that bill.
Sounds to me like Exxon needs to pay that bill, but.
I doubt they are, um.
If we didn't order them, and.
Well, they ordered because they showed up.
Yeah.
I mean, they have shown up, and so whatever Exxon policies are for billing et cetera, they showed up, and so they were ours, and so. You know, I, I, I.
I just don't wanna look like we.
And I won't, um. But I, BJ is absolutely right. On the day he and I talked, we, I initially, I had to deny the requisition to purchase the cameras. Because, and I emailed BJ and the sheriff and said, hey, uh, I've denied this requisition, I did that because they needed to know that, because, let's wait on this grant. And they said, okay, that's great, and BJ and I talked that day, and he said, let's pause on the shipping of these cameras, and I said, that's a good idea. Let's pause on that, we may can still salvage this grant. And so, then next thing I know, I agree with him, next thing we know, they show up on our doorstep. And so then we're, you know, it's, the grant's out the window at that point, once they showed up, so. He's right, invoice didn't get paid, but they're ours, because they're in our agency, so.
Well, what can we do for this not to happen again?
I think communication, what we've been talking about the whole day.
Yeah.
I think communication, uh, between, you know, our sheriff's office, our, our finance office, me. Um, I think it can get better on all of our parts, I, I'm not gonna blame it on them, I'm not gonna blame it on me, I think it can get better all the way around.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner, why?
Uh, okay. All right. You got anything else, Sheriff, you need to address, or like to address, or?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask this, uh. We've ta-, we've talked about the budget and other things. I don't think some people would be shocked what I'm going to bring up now, and I know I'm going to offend some folks, uh, just because of whatever side you're on. I, I was elected sheriff in two thousand and fourteen, and, and the statute was clear about the responsibilities of the sheriff, who, who he reports to, and who he doesn't report to. This meeting is a perfect example, if the commissioner summons me, I have to show up, as part of the process. I do think that we need to communicate, uh, more. Uh, I think I've dropped the ball on, uh, not being involved in the county commissioners' meetings as I, I should. Maybe I took for granted, uh, that some, that maybe things should've been known, maybe we discussed them, maybe they got dropped, uh. I don't know. But I do know that as the sheriff of this county, I refuse to be micromanaged. And that's, that is what's happening, I feel, I don't think it's being done intentionally. I think that, uh, it's just a habit. But when, uh, I've got to get clearance to, let's just say for instance, to install body cameras. And I send VC three an email, what do I need to do on my side to make sure that I'm ready when you show up? Every single email that goes to VC three goes back to April Snead. And before, VC three will respond to you, April Snead is responding. And she wants to know about all the body cameras, and what we're going to do here, and do that. And it's just not one time, guys, it's all the time, every email. I'm not going to operate that way. If you need me, I'll show up, I'll come to the meetings. But I am not going to ask permission to put color on one of my copy machines. And that's happened, whether it was by accident or not, I'm not going to operate that way. Now, if there's a micromanage problem, uh, it should be obvious, it's, it's, it's filtered through the other agencies. Uh, they just can't speak as freely as I can, but you better, you better take a look at it and see what's happening, or you're going to lose a lot of people because of it. She has too much on her plate to be micromanaged in the sheriff's office, being worried about the size of a fire truck, and all this other stuff that's happening. Now, we may not communicate much when I leave from here, and I really don't, it is what it is. But I am not going to be micromanaged. I've ran this sheriff's office for the last ten years without any issues. I understand it's an issue, and we're going to address it. But I'd be darned if I'm going to wait for emails to come to get permission from anybody. You can't make an adjustment to RMS, you can't do this. I messed up when I gave that server I bought before we went over to VC three, I messed up. I should've kept that new server, installed it, and, and we'd separate ourselves from everything, and we wouldn't have the problems I'm having today, micromanaging. There's not an officer sitting in here that can't pull up their emails and see the micromanaging going on. And it's going to start today with me. I don't tell her how to do her job, it ma-, there may be a question about money, but I don't tell her to do her job. But I can look back at the history and see it, but I can't tell her how to do her job, she's not going to tell me how to do mine. That's how I am.
Okay. I don't know what to say back to that, I mean, I, 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 I understand it. I understand it, yeah, it's probably not. Um, but, um.
You want me to tell you?
I understand it, I understand what you're saying. And, and I, and I don't, I don't, I don't want to put this directly at you, because you're in a, a different bucket than everybody else is. But I think some, some, some folks in the county, and maybe department heads, are confusing management with micromanagement. Uh, because they didn't have a management over the last twelve years, or fourteen years, or however long the, the previous management was here. And so they don't know what being managed looks like. And, and now, it feels like a micromanage thing. And again, I'm not addressing this at you, because I think the sheriff, I think sheriff is right. If, if, if we budget X amount of dollars through the sheriff's department, is his. Then we get out of the way, and we let the sheriff do his thing. Now, there's some county policies in there that we have to, to make sure of, but, 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 and, and all that kind of stuff, yeah. That, that, that we have to do. But I do think we, we need to, you know, because we didn't decide that Ralph Cursey's the sheriff of Scotland County. The people of Scotland County decided they wanted Ralph Cursey as their sheriff of Scotland County. And, and he will rise, sink, or fall based on that, you know? And, and, and so, uh, we, we need to put that responsibility there. But, um, the, I think there's a, anyway, I've said what I must say.
Let me ask you this.
Yep.
One thing was asked last week, there's a lot of things that have happened over the last week or two before this meeting, between VC three showing up on things we've asked for for weeks. Till yesterday, show up, and the color gets put on the copy machine, and now they're talking with VC three about, uh, putting the body cameras on there. I had Jason Butler to send an email to, to VC three, because the link was provided for us to work directly with VC three. The body cameras are here, Jason knows it. VC three never responded back to Jason Butler. April Snead did, on, at four o'clock in the afternoon last Friday. Now, I don't need that, because there's nothing right there, right at that moment, that involves her. All we were asking was, do we need to run a line, or whatever? Those are the things, those are the things that I'm saying, that I, I'm just not going to tolerate, I'm going to hurt somebody's feeling.
I, I'll be, I, I need to respond to this. I don't know about, one, I don't get every VC three email, because if I did, I would do nothing else in my day. VC three reached out to me to say, we're ready to start the body camera project, we want to make sure we get this done right. Who can I contact at the sheriff's department to do this? I said, I emailed, uh, twice, Mr. Butler, and he said, me, or BJ. I responded back, that's it. I don't know, I, I know y'all are getting new pro- copiers, so yeah, I guess they came and put color on them. But to say, I get every VC three email, I wouldn't have time in the day to do that across this county. A- and, and so, you know, a- a- apparently they think I do.
No, I get them, I get them.
I only reach out when VC three has reached out to me and said, ha-, and asked me a question. So, I, I guess to help facilitate, I don't know. Uh, I reach out when they reach out.
As long as it stops today, I'm fine, I'm just telling you, I'm not going to tolerate it anymore.
Well, and, and maybe we need to talk to VC three, I mean, maybe, you know.
Well, I mean, I, I, I guess if they want to ask a question, they can, uh, and I'm going to do my best to answer their questions, so they can.
Right.
Give the sheriff's department what they need timely.
Right.
Uh, we want them to get it timely, they got their cameras there, they need them installed.
But I guess the question is, why would a VC three? My question to that is, why would VC three ask you or somebody else, instead of asking somebody at the sheriff? You get, I know, I know, I know you, I know you can't, I know you can't. And that's why I'm saying, maybe we should ask that question to VC three, as to, as to why, you know? Maybe they don't know who to contact, I don't know, I don't know. And, um, or, or, but.
And it's not just VC three.
No, I get it, I get it, I get it. Um, all right. Does anybody else got any question?
Yeah.
So we're going to leave here and, and look for a action plan on, on.
Team.
An incentive, I got it, I got it, I understand. Uh, with the action plan on hiring, and maybe an incentive type of thing, some kind of plan to put together on that. Uh, go ahead, Ed, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to bring, so the sheriff mentioned earlier about us running to Richmond County to build a jail. I, I guess I'd like to address that. So, Judge Futrell has put a proposal out, it's been out for years, to have a three-county jail, Anson, Richmond, and Scotland. And I think the tyranny of distance is pretty tough on a three-county jail, right? Because now we'd be driving probably to Rockingham. So, you know, you've heard, uh, Tim mention, or Commissioner Ivy mentioned, that they're talking about eighty million dollars, if we build one in our county. Well, if we go in together and build a larger facility that two counties can support, uh, financially, perhaps we can do that for fifty million apiece, or something like that. So, this is a place that we're supposed to be thinking out of the box. We're supposed to be doing things that are good for our taxpayers. While you may recover some money from a jail, from housing other inmates and stuff like that, it's not a money-making proposition. It costs you money every single day. So, I'm going to say, I'm, I don't have a problem with trying to come up with a solution that's good for our taxpayers, for something that's just going to be a constant resource drain for us, but is a critical thing that we have to do in our community. So you can mock it, you can think, oh, God, you know, why is he doing that? Well, apparently Judge Futrell thinks it's a pretty good idea on an even bigger scale. So, as a commissioner, I'm going to continue to ask hard questions, because I'm seeking what's the best way to deliver the work that we have to do. And a question should not scare anyone, it shouldn't intimidate anyone. It's a chance to inform, and it's a chance to show that you know what you're talking about. So, I, I just want to be clear about this. You know, we can paint this all different ways, but this is about one issue. Finding a jail that will hold the capacity, and finding it at a cost that we can actually live with as taxpayers. We all know reevaluation's coming, we know that everything is getting more expensive. If we don't think critically now, by the time this happens, it's going to be too late to make changes that we could've made a year or two ago. So, I'm not against the sheriff's idea on this, or what his approach might be, but I feel like I'm advocating for the people of this county, and for honestly, what makes good common sense. And, no, there's probably some challenges with it, but it's something that's been done around the state of North Carolina, and we know the legislature has a greater appetite to support joint projects than for us to have our own. So, I, I make no apologies for doing this, and I'm, and I think Richmond County feels the same way. They're like, look, we know this is a big issue, they have the same overcrowding we do. So, um, before you believe anything else, I want you to hear it from me. That's my motivation, that's what this is about for me.
And, and I'll say also, I agree with Ed, this is talking stages. Why can't we talk about it? Why can't we see the pros and cons? We may get into it and say, oh, boy, this isn't working, this isn't what we go, need to do. But there's no, there, I don't see a problem with talking about it. And, um, and I, if, if it can save the taxpayers money, and we're, um, or save, where we can drop our, hey, I want to drop our tax rate as bad as anybody. But if we don't look at different, I mean, as Ed said, out-of-the-box issues, um, we're not going to, we're not going to get anywhere. We're going to be in the same rut, doing the same thing over and over. This is just ta-, this is just talk. Um, you know, there's nothing been formed in a, you know, in ink or anything. But we have seen that it does work, because it is being done in other parts of, of the state, so, you know.
I tell you, I got an, I got a text last night from a friend with a video that said, uh, the three worst places to live in North Carolina. Has anybody else seen that video?
I have, it's Larnburg.
Larnburg's number one, right? And I love this community, and I know we have issues, and I don't think this number one is deserved in any way, but it's something we absolutely have to face, and we're making hard decisions. And, um, I would just ask you to believe that every person sitting at this table is trying to do the right thing, in the best way we know how, to get to a good outcome. So, um, I'll leave it at that.
And I don't think any person here on this board has a personal agenda. I mean, I certainly don't. Um, all I want to do, in the infamous words of my mother, is I want to do the best I can for Scotland County, because I love this county. I've lived in it all my life. And I, I will always tell the truth, whether it hurts somebody's feelings, or it doesn't hurt anybody's feelings. It doesn't make any difference to me, but I got to lay down at night, and that's the way I look at it. If my conscience is clear, and I'm good with the good Lord, hey, I'm good in life.
Sheriff, anything else, BJ, anything?
Well, I, I, I don't disagree with Mr. O'Neill. If they, about the, the, the jail, the prison, or whatever they build over there in Richmond County. Uh, I mean, if they build it, they build it.
Well, I hope they build it in Scotland County.
I was, I was referring to, uh, where we are now, when I brought it up, in our jail. That, the hundred and some inmates, of all, it's just an issue.
Yeah.
I will tell you that, uh, those forty inmates, that hopefully will be notified by today, because Mr. Woods did call us, or sent a message, an email, and we gave John's number. Uh, so it looks like it's hopefully somewhere around forty inmates that will be moved. And, uh, so that's going to be somewhere around, if they're healthy, about eighty thousand dollars a month, if they're healthy. And I don't know how far, that's not counting going to pick them up and bring them back to.
Right. I was going to say, it's going to take a bus to move, I don't know if you can move forty at one time, can you?
Yeah.
And now where was you taking them to?
The, wherever.
You just put them in different jails around?
Whoever has a place available. I do know, I showed, I spoke with Sheriff, uh, McVicker. They built his facility down there a couple of years ago, maybe two years ago. He told me his facility had enough beds, that he subs a number of beds out to the US Marshals and stuff, and it's almost making this jail payment. Because they go ahead and rent the beds, and the money that he's making off of it is contributing really back to. Because if we ever built one, it'd need to be, I would say, two hundred beds, here, unless you consolidate it and build two over there.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Nothing? Nothing else? Thank you for coming, thank you for the information, and we'll thank you in advance for bringing us what we've asked for, you know, at, at our next meeting. Um, thanks for everybody here, and everybody watching online, because I think there's a large crowd watching online right now. But, uh, if nobody else has anything, Mr. Attorney, anything? We will adjourn this meeting till our next meeting's November third at six o'clock, right here. Thank you all for coming. Yep, 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 yep.